Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We all enjoyed a week of summer last week, but it seems like winter is back. So, it is the middle of November, so that is kind of what we should be expecting. I'd like to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance reads as follows: From the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got meeting documents available for review down next to Commissioner Hiberger. Remind everyone to silence their cellphone. And Craig or Carol are around if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes. First, we have the commission meeting minutes for October 27th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from November 6th, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is item three. Entertain a motion to approve the bills to be paid in the amount of $1,710,591.91.
Move for...
Move for...
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
So, we have $260,000 for healthcare at the jail. We've got over $700,000 for highway projects, $191,000 for 911 transfer, and $199,000 for capital projects to include the drainage at the jail.
Thank you. That's a good summary of some of our larger bills. Anyone else? Any other comments? If not, you had a motion and a second, so roll call vote, please, Olivia.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, item four, reports. We have the Minnehaha County Coroner Report for September 2020 for everyone's review. Takes us to item five, personnel actions. First item is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to recognize the significant employee anniversaries for November 2020. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning. Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. We have several anniversaries for you today. We have Ben Cruz, Kyle Johnson, Corey DeGroot, and Christopher Miles all celebrating five years of service. Celebrating 10, we have Tess Severson with the Public Defender's Office. Celebrating 15, we have Carla Dirksen and Julie Ladwig, both with the Sheriff's Office. And we have two people celebrating 20 years of service, Don Heesch, who works in the jail, and Mark Jastrom, who's with the Sheriff's Administration. So, a lot of years of service piling up with those individuals, and we are grateful for all they've done.
Absolutely. That is a tremendous amount of experience and hard work that have gone to the benefit of the Minnehaha County residents, so thanks to all of them.
The last item I have is to record the volunteers in the county departments for October, and we're sitting close to 200 for last month. Speaking of hard work and gratitude for service, it really helps out especially now when all that effort is needed.
Absolutely. Thanks to all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item six, abatements recommended for approval. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests. First item is to authorize the auditor to publish a notice requesting proposals for CMAR services for the administration and extension building, design, and renovation. Good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The authorization to allow the auditor to publish the proposal for CMAR services is before you here today. We are engaging in a number of different building projects, and the CMAR model is one that is used across the country right now to help control costs and get a better handle on predictability of costs prior to breaking ground. The administration and extension building, that's what this RFP is for, is for CMAR services for that specific project. The RFP was drafted by Tegra and has been reviewed by the Commission Office and Commissioners Barth and Bender, who are on that committee. Additionally, the dates for publishing the notices has been confirmed with Olivia Larson in the auditor's office. And then ultimately, if this RFP is published, the responses are due back on December 2nd. We should conduct interviews the second full week of December.
Any questions, Craig? It's exciting to get these projects moving forward. I appreciate all of the hard work that you've done and that Tegra did to put together these RFPs. That's a lot of work, so, all right.
I would make a motion to publish the notice requesting a CMAR service.
Second.
Second. Any other comments or questions? Not? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eight, which is a first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish notice of hearing on December 1st, 2020 to consider vacation of statutory right-of-way 20-01. Kevin Huckman, good morning.
Kevin Huckman, County Planning Department. Today is a notice for upcoming meeting and to publish notice. For Minnehaha County received a petition from the Highway Department to vacate a portion of County Highway 137, which is 470th Avenue. I've got a map showing up here. The highway recently was part of a reconstruction project, was move the highway around an existing church and parking lot. And this is to vacate the portion of the highway that kind of contains the parking lot of the church and to kind of wrap up the construction project. South Dakota Codified Law Number 3137 requires legal notice to be published two consecutive weeks, so that brings the potential hearing to be on December 1st. So, staff is looking for action to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public hearing and the right-of-way vacation, number 2001. Is there any questions?
Any questions at all this morning? Commissioner Karski?
So, when we vacate this, does this property ownership then revert back to that church? Or who's going to own the property?
Yes, and in this case, there's actually going to be three property owners to begin with, since it's vacating on both sides of the section line. One side is going to go to the church, which owns the two parcels, kind of, you can see the parcels in the south side of it. Then some of it's going to go to the farmer to the north of the church property, and then some of it's actually going to go to the farmer on the east side because it's on the east side of the section line.
So, we give it to them? We don't sell it to them?
Correct.
They owned it originally.
But we had to buy the land on the other side to put the road there?
Correct.
Commissioner Hiberger?
It just, this was a project that the highway worked on for a while, and obviously, I've driven out there, and I'm from the north side of Sioux Falls, and it looks really nice. It's given a great access to the church there, and it was, it's really nice. And it's nice to see we're finally cleaning this up, this and the next project, which I was surprised wasn't cleaned up prior to this, but this is very nice to see this done. Is there a motion? If there isn't, I will make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So, as Commissioner Hiberger indicated, then the next item is item 8B, which is a first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish notice of hearing on December 1st, 2020 to consider vacation of statutory right-of-way 20-02. Kevin?
Yes, again, this is a received petition from Representative, the landowner this time, rather than the Highway Department. And this highway is located at the intersection of highways 137 and 126th. It's about a half mile north the town of Crooks. The intersection once had a curved highway there in order to allow traffic to move along to the two different highways without stopping. The road was reconstructed in 2011, but the highway was never vacated or changed at that time after construction. So, the petitioner is requesting to vacate this. This also has an exhibit with it to clarify the vacation area because there's a couple of H-slots that are being vacated in this case where we're going to vacate most, but not all, in order to maintain the highway width. Again, this is the notice for the hearing to be done on December 1st and publish notification in the paper. Is there any questions?
Any questions? All right, if not, entertain a motion.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you both very much. All right, this takes us to item nine, which is a petition for compromise of lien, DPNO 97336, 51227, and 59070. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda, Storely, Commission Office. So, the petitioner is requesting a compromise of the three liens in full with no payment or with a $1,000 offer to settle the liens. She is currently unemployed and living at the St. Francis House and is not considering any real estate transaction at this time, but would like to buy a house in the future. Her plan is to eliminate all of her debt while she is in treatment and is hoping you'll consider her request. The combined balance of the three liens is $10,079.61. Lean 97336 is $723 for legal counsel. One payment of $100 was made. Lean 51227 is $8,797.91. Several payments have been made totaling $2,804.20. The unpaid balance for legal counsel is $1,993.80, and poor relief is $6,805.11. Lean 59070 is $558.70 for legal counsel for a child and is a shared responsibility, also recorded under a Jason Lund apparent. No payments have been made on that lien. She also shared with our office that she has received legal representation twice in 2020, but the lien fees for April and October have not been recorded yet at this time. All of the lien fees were confirmed with Human Services and the courts.
Are there questions for Melinda? Does not appear the applicant is here this morning.
No, she has a schedule conflict on Tuesdays.
Okay, thank you. All right, thoughts? Commissioner Karski?
While I admire and respect this individual for wanting to settle the county lien, there's really no pressing reason why we should waive it. And if she has the money, there's other debt that she has that has interest accumulating on it, and we don't charge interest. I think that, you know, if in the future she is in the process of buying a house and wants us to consider it at that time, I'd be all for that, but at this point, I just don't see a pressing reason why we would forgive this lien. And if she has cash, she should be taking care of other debt. Not that other debt is more important than debt to the county, but I don't want to give up the possibility that we have other money that we could accumulate. And we're giving up $9,000. We're giving it up for 10 cents on the dollar, so I personally am not in favor of it. While I do admire the fact that she came and is trying her best to make things work, I think she's better off putting the money towards something else.
Other comments, thoughts? Commissioner Hiberger?
I tend to agree with what Commissioner Karski said. I had another thought, too, and I'm not sure that I want to go this direction either, but if, I'm not in favor of compromising the legal fees at all at this point because I just don't think that, I mean, we're still dealing with some of that, and I think that you need to, our legal representation is very cheap. If we would want to give some incentive to, we recognize she's working very hard at this, I would be interested in, or suggest, I guess, maybe that, you know, we compromise some or all of the poor relief. I know we do that a lot of times, and this is for a hospital bill. And so, that'd be the only place I would be interested in possibly, or at least consider would compromising some of the poor relief part of it, but not the legal fees. I'm just not interested in looking at that at this point.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Commissioner Barth?
So, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Hiberger, who takes these liens so very seriously. And, you know, the applicant has yet to prove that she's really following through on taking care of her, the issues which have caused her all this trouble. I know that the one bill was for a voluntary trip to detoxify her or something like that. And, you know, I think we should try to hold some part of this to assure her that we will help her, but we're not ready to forgive it all at this time. Commissioner Hiberger, do you have a thought on the amount?
I'm actually waiting to see if Commissioner Bennega has any thoughts at all before I would even suggest any more than my comments.
Right, thank you.
I'm struggling a little bit with this one because frankly, I know this person personally. The issue for me currently is that we have an application that was filed in February this year, which makes it kind of old, and then we've had two incidents in the past number of months to add to this. I think we're still in limbo on whether or not we're able to settle this because until we know that we're on a positive path, we may have more issues to deal with, and this frankly holds some accountability until we get to that point where we will help, but it also, I think, makes her more accountable in frankly what needs to happen in the near future. So, I would like to delay this if I could because I really feel like that in the long range is going to help her recover and feel more successful in her process. So, I'm kind of on the same page as the rest of you on frankly what needs to be done to make the best benefit for her, not for the county.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're not in favor of taking any action at this time?
No, I would not.
Are you interested in making that a motion?
Yes, I would be.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Is there a date certain?
I don't believe we need to put a date on it at this point.
Yeah, there would be no date. It would just, she'd have the opportunity to reapply.
Okay.
Any other comments? Thoughts? All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Melinda.
Very much.
So, this is our opportunity for public...
Let's stop again here for just a second. I'm sort of, it's not exactly on the same issue, but we need to get the liens that other departments have updated quickly so that we're to date on these things. If there are legal expenses that we've expended, they could be quickly included onto liens like these. And we're a little bit out there when we don't know what that is, what those numbers are.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. I know that IT has been working on a new application for liens and that that should assist us in that regard, so I think that's about operational now. So, thank you. All right, so that takes us to public comment. If there's anyone here this morning for public comment, this is your opportunity to come forward. All right, seeing none, that takes us to regular business. Item 10, I'd consider a motion to reappoint Carol Tweet to the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission is an entity that's set up to manage the physical structure of Safe Home. That's a successful tax credit, a program that the county has worked in partnership with Human Services and Lloyd Companies as well as Citibank on. The HRC is comprised of five members, one of which is Commissioner Jeff Barth. Right now, we have one appointment that is up for reappointment. It is a five-year term. Carol Tweet, former Minnehaha County Commissioner, has been very supportive of Safe Home and brings a lot of enthusiasm and passion for that project. And so, Carol had expressed interest in being reappointed, and she has just loved being part of it and wanted me to relay that to you. She is a joy to work with. I knew her previously before I came to the county and really feel good about the contribution she makes to HRC.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks to Carol Tweet for her willingness to serve again. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 11. Consider a motion to approve a budget reduction to the unused One Sioux Falls Shelter Grant Funds that have been returned to the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. Lori Montes.
According to Lori Montes, Human Services, Minnehaha County was originally awarded $25,000 from the One Sioux Falls Fund back in April, and that was given to us to help house people that were previously staying in hotels as their primary residence. And so, for the period from April till June, our staff assisted with One Sioux Falls Funds for people that were in those situations. After about the middle of June, the One Sioux Falls Fund switched gears a little bit and so asked for the remaining of that $25,000 that had been awarded back to the One Sioux Falls Fund, and so we did return to them $15,101.1. And so, just asking for a motion to approve that budget reduction to currently reflect what we have currently available for One Sioux Falls money through Human Services.
Any questions?
Commissioner Bender, I'll meet that motion. This is Jeff.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth.
Second with a question.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Karski?
So, Lori, does that money go back into the budget that we're using to help with housing?
Yes, it did.
It does, okay.
Yes.
Clarification question.
Is that county money, or is that the One Sioux Falls, the money that was given by the city?
Those are the One Sioux Falls donations that the community members and businesses raised.
Commissioner Hiberger?
Clarification. So, we have a One Sioux Falls Fund, Lori, I'm talking to you more or less, that the city has given money for the county to cover rents and mortgages and utilities. This money was specifically for hotels. We have now returned that $15,100, and it would be up to the city whether they decided to put that money back into the little pot that we have over here for mortgages. Am I understanding that correctly?
Not exactly. So, the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation is an overseer of the One Sioux Falls Fund. And so, early on, we were given that $25,000, and then they asked for that back toward the end of June, I think early July, it was returned to them. And then subsequent to that, then they have since allocated additional funds to us to assist with rent, utilities, and mortgages. And then working on that since probably the middle of August. So, it was funds that we had received that were returned to them, but those funds are still reflecting in our budget, so we're needing to show that that $15,101.1 was returned to One Sioux Falls previously.
Okay, so that money is no longer the county's money to assist people with housing. It's gone back, it's going back to the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation.
Correct.
So, it was basically a cleanup from what we did in June for our accounting purposes, I'm assuming, so that money may have already been spent.
Correct.
All right, any other questions for Lori? All right, we had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks, Lori. So, that takes us to item 12, which is to consider a bid award recommendation to contract with Creher &amp; Blaine for the chiller replacement at the energy plant. Bids were opened on October 21st. Mark Krins.
Good morning, Commission. Mark Krins, Director of Facilities. The county previously advertised for competitive sealed bids for the purpose of replacing, installing, and maintaining chillers at the Minnehaha County Energy Plant. Proposals for the chiller were opened on October 21st, 2020, with five reputable contractors submitting proposals. The evaluation committee then evaluated and graded based upon the criteria outlined in the request for proposals. After thorough review, the evaluation committee scored the responsive proposals, also checked the references provided. Taking all criteria and references into consideration, the evaluation committee determined that Creher &amp; Blaine, Inc. is the most qualified and best suited to perform the work and services outlined in the request for proposals. The overall price offered in the Creher &amp; Blaine, Inc. proposal is $1,887,800. The price and other bases on which the determination was made will be contained within the final contract, which will be approved by the county commission. Based on the determination of the evaluation committee, I am recommending that the county commission order the chiller replacement project to Creher &amp; Blaine, Inc. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mark? Commissioner Karski?
Original budget, 2.2 million? Is that correct?
2.25.
2.25, okay. So, this came in well under the estimated budget. I'm assuming Creher &amp; Blaine wasn't the lowest bid? There are other, okay?
No, Creher &amp; Blaine wasn't the lowest bid. There was seven criterias that were, that each proposal was scored on. Price, service, maintenance, conforming to the RFP, warranty, warranty service history, the quality of the contractor, and the quality of the chiller. So, based on those seven, that's where we got it down to Creher &amp; Blaine.
Who were the evaluators, if I could ask, Mark?
That was two of us out of the Facilities Department.
Are there questions for Mark? It's a project you've been working on for quite a while, so I appreciate all of your hard work. It will be a tremendous addition to the comfort of all the Minnehaha County employees. of all the Minnehaha County employees. So if there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please. Olivia.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mark. All right, that takes us to Item 13, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement for comprehensive institutional healthcare services with Correctional Medical Management LLC for the Minnehaha County Jail. Good morning.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, I'm the chief deputy with the Sheriff's Office. I'm just asking that the commission sign the contract award with Correctional Manage, Medical Management LLC, which is a partnership between Morris Correctional Healthcare Consulting and Health Management Partners Sioux Falls. We're really excited about this opportunity with having a local vendor to be able to provide the medical care at the jail. And after reviewing their proposal and the other proposals that submitted, I think we've selected the right vendor for us and really looking forward to getting going with this group.
Questions? I had the opportunity to sit in on the final interview, and it was an impressive group that came, and we're really excited about the opportunity to have a local vendor help source and keep our staffing at a level that is appropriate so that the people in our care get the kind of care that they need on a, on a regular basis. So if there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Bennega?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Yes.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, that takes us to Item 14, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? I think a lot of our liaison reports have already happened between the building committee and the regular commission meetings, so. All right, if there are no other liaison reports, is there any new business? One item.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Um, I'd like to congratulate you and Commissioner Karski on winning reelection. I think the county will be well served with you two staying on. And I guess additionally, I'd like to say that having lost an election in the last week, I think that the two fellows that defeated me will also do a good job, do a good job, and I congratulate them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The other item for new business that I wanted to just briefly introduce, and we don't necessarily have to make a decision today, but I think the commission office is looking for some feedback, is the possibility of cutting back one or possibly two meetings in the January through April or May period. You know, COVID, while we had great news yesterday about the possibility of a vaccine being identified, there's very clear that there won't be any general distribution of that vaccine that will really be impactful of COVID, likely on a widespread basis during first half of next year, probably all of next year, it sounds like. And so one of the things that we can do to try to do our part, you know, besides washing our hands and staying home when we're sick and wearing masks when we can't socially distance, is to try to limit the amount of interaction that people have in general. And so one thing that we did do with, I think, you know, some success during kind of the onset of COVID, March, April, May period, is we cut back a meeting or two just to limit the amount of interaction that folks need to have. It does make for a longer meeting the following week. But, you know, I particularly think it would be a good idea for us to eliminate the second meeting of the month. If we get that out there early enough, then we can schedule around that. We don't, we can make sure that we avoid hearing dates and things like that. And then possibly if we end up with a week, I haven't looked at the months. If we have a month where there's a fifth Tuesday in that month, perhaps we could eliminate that one as well. Another option that has been kicked around is just, you know, maybe going every other week. And so I think we're just looking to see if you guys have any feedback on, on that idea, those ideas. Commissioner Karski?
You know, bugs spread when we're in enclosed confined facilities. And as you said, the more we can eliminate that, the better. I'm all, all for it. If we can consolidate meeting, meetings and agendas without interfering with the government or the business of government or the government of business, however you want to talk about it, I, I think it's a great idea. So whether it's eliminating one meeting or going every other week or those months when we have five Tuesdays, eliminating the second and fifth, what, I mean, I'm, I'm open to any of that and sure willing to consider it.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm open to the idea. You know, we bring in five, five of us that aren't normally in this building, so we're bringing in all of our friends with us, with our germs. And our staff really, I think, appreciates when they do have a Tuesday off. They're able to get a lot of other additional work done, so they're not preparing a meeting. And with all the building projects we have coming up right now, I'm sure they would appreciate a few extra hours every week that they don't have to prepare for this meeting every single week. And Commissioner Karski is right. We're not bringing all these additional germs into the building, and we ultimately want to keep our staff safe so we can keep our building open.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Yes, Commissioner Barth?
Well, Gerald, I mean Gerald, Dean and Cindy both have brought up great points there. I guess additionally, I think that we, to authorize the chair, whoever it is, you or Dean, a little bit more power to make a decision on the spot. I think all of us know where we're coming from. And that, you know, if you needed to reimpose a, a fire burn ban, for example, we shouldn't have to wait a month to get it done. I think that, you know, the US Chair or whoever knows what we are thinking and needs sometimes to make a decision on the spot. And we should discuss that and maybe give some additional power to the chairperson, since we pay them so much extra anyway.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bennega?
Well, I'm very flexible with whatever schedule is decided. I sometimes think that doing something similar to what Lincoln County does and, excuse me, start at eight o'clock rather than eight or nine o'clock would also be helpful. It's just frankly more efficient for everyone, I believe. And the meetings will last longer. And it would probably be more conducive to the individuals who have to go back to work for other functions and people who testify or come for whatever continuous purpose they're here. It would be easier for them also to start maybe an hour earlier.
Commissioner Karski?
One more comment, just so everybody understands that we're, as county commissioners, not shirking our responsibilities. This meeting that people see us having once a week is such a small part of the time that we actually spend in our role as county commissioners, meeting with department heads and just the emails and phone calls and other stuff that goes on. One thing I would suggest is that we do maintain consistency and meet, if it's the first and third or whatever it be, that we maintain consistency so people know when we are doing government business, so.
That's a good point. All right, well, I think that was helpful feedback. I think we have some direction, so thank you very much for that. All right, any other new business? Any old business? All right, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll recess for, why don't we say we'll recess until 10 till, and then we will reconvene in executive session. Thank you.